This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from July 10th, 2024 and July 15th, 2024 were received. Any comments, questions? The minutes were stand as submitted. Proclamation. Montana Pride Week proclamation. City of Helena proclamation. Whereas the City of Helena adopted ordinance 3162 prohibiting certain forms of discrimination in the City of Helena. And whereas ordinance 3162 prohibits discrimination on the basis of age, race, color, national origin, ancestry, religion, creed, sex, pregnancy, marital status, familial status, physical and mental disability. And in addition to these protections, it is the intent of the City of Helena that no person shall be denied his or her civil rights or be discriminated against based on his or her sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. And whereas the City of Hel- City Commission recognizes that people are people and we welcome everyone in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I will, McCollins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim July 28th to August 3rd, 2024 as Montana Pride Week throughout this city and I encourage all the people of Helena to attend the many events that are happening in our city. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 29th day of July, 2024, will McCollins, Mayor attest, Dana Claiborne, Clerk of the Court. Do we have? Oh, you're supposed to give it to the clerk. Supposed to hand it over to the clerk and she will take it. No, you're supposed to give everything to the clerk. Thank you. Board appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Gulf Advisory Board. Appointment of Jeremy Vasilek to an interim term on the Gulf Advisory Board. Interim term will expire October 31st, 2026. Helena Housing Authority. Appointment of Brokuseline to a first term on the Helena Housing Authority as a dwelling resident. Term will expire August 1st, 2026. Lewis and Clark Heritage Tourism Council. Appointment of Michael Hall to a first term on the Lewis and Clark Heritage Tourism Council as a city appointee. Term will expire June 30th, 2027. Parking Advisory Board. Appointment of Julia Gusterson to a first term on the Parking Advisory Board as a property owner. Term will expire August 1st, 2027. Appointment of Seth Branding Burger to the first term on the Parking Advisory Board as a Business Improvement District Board Representative. Term will expire August 1st, 2027. Appointment of Joan Taylor to a first term on the Parking Advisory Board as residential parking permit holder. Term will expire August 1st, 2026. Appointment of Sandy Shaw to a first term on the Parking Advisory Board as a downtown business representative. Term will expire August 1st, 2027. Appointment of Christopher Fekandu to a first term on the Parking Advisory Board as a Citizen at Large. Term will expire August 1st, 2026. Commissioners. Any comments, questions? Okay. Well, do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the, uh, the appointments as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consent agenda, one motion, no presentation required. Interlocal agreement for a joint infrastructure study with Lewis and Clark County. Is that Director Leland? If no presentation, would you, maybe there will be questions? Okay, so Commissioners, any comments or questions? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk. Any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move approval of the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena for funding the infrastructure study within the urban standards boundary urban growth area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commission proposals from the Commissioners, what say you? Anything? Move along. Reporter of the City Attorney?
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Reporter of the City Manager?
Mayor Commissioners, last week, as I think you're all aware, there was a pretty big storm in Missoula causing a lot of damage. Later in the week, I got a call from the Chief Administrative Officer in Missoula asking for assistance. We had a group of city employees volunteer to go help as city employees on the payroll. And Mayor, we sent some arborists, a ladder truck, a dump truck to help clean up critical areas in the city. Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Chris Daly up, our Urban Forestry Supervisor, to talk about their experience in Missoula.
You bet. Chris, you have the floor.
Uh, Mayor Collins, Commissioners, um, thank you for having me up here. As the City Manager mentioned, there was an unprecedented weather event with winds upwards of 100 miles an hour in town. Uh, Missoula woke up. Emergency vehicles were not even able to navigate, uh, local roads. And so the call was put out. The Urban Forestry Manager, Ben Carson, uh, called me just to feel out, you know, what, what our willingness to, to do that would be. And, uh, at that point, they were still just like shoving trees off the road with, with dozers so ambulances and fire trucks could get through. We were under a wind watch at the time, so I was hesitant to commit, um, until the following day when we were clear of that, that watch. At that time, I had two arborists, Jerry Parker and Gabe King volunteer, uh, to go over, over the weekend. They're still there today. Urban forestry staff has spent the most of their time mitigating the most severe of hazards. Things like leaning trees that have, uh, that are like twisting and have pressure on them and can be unpredictable when they're cut. Um, we were the only bucket truck to respond to their call, uh, so we have been handling the mo- the most complex calls, um, often side by side with, uh, Missoula crews. I've been in close contact with Ben Carson, uh, communicating and evaluating their needs, um, and how best we can support them, um, with the resources that, that we had dispatched over there. Ben has done an excellent job, um, supporting our crew, um, while they're over there. Dispatching our crew and to utilize our professional skills effectively, um, during the time that we have allocated to help. He has communicated with me that any contractor assistance will not be in Missoula until next week at the very earliest. And he had asked if we could potentially stay there until this Friday. We were originally scheduled to be in Missoula until tomorrow night. As of today, uh, my employees have put in approximately 45 hours apiece over four days and, uh, they're tiring physically and mentally. They will return as scheduled on Tuesday and we will reevaluate if it makes sense to dispatch them again for another hitch, uh, for Thursday and Friday. Uh, Ben Carson, uh, Ryan Applegate, Missoula's Deputy Parks and Rec Director, as well as Missoula City Administration, has communicated their sincere appreciation to the City of Helena, um, for our partnerships, partnership and support during our neighbors' time of need. One final note, I was actually in Missoula today, uh, independent of my staff being there for some appointments and stuff, and it was, it was pretty astonishing. I've worked for the city for 10 years and I've seen a lot of storm damage, picked up a lot of very, you know, complex trees on cars and houses and, and what I saw was, um, I've never seen anything like it. It, uh, it looked like the footage from, you know, the Gulf of Mexico when hurricanes come through. It was just, there was debris, every road you drove down, there was branches, whole trees still laying in the middle of the road and stuff like that. So I, I fully believe that those guys are very appreciative of us, uh, coming over, um, and everything that we've done. So, um, they express their gratitude to, to us for allowing that to happen.
You bet. Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Daly, thank you very much. Please express our gratitude to your team, um, for acting very quickly in responding to the need of our neighbors to the west. We've all seen the photos and heard the stories and, uh, just awful, but we really appreciate your quick response. And it's just another, just another story of Montanans helping Montanans and, uh, please give your team our thanks.
Commissioner Shertliff, I will do that, thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just echo the same thanks. I, I have friends that didn't get power back on until last night and so I know that they were very grateful for all of the municipalities that came in to help out. I think, I'm sure Missoula would do the same for us if we, we had the same kind of situation, but really grateful that you all were willing to, um, take some time out of the weekend to go help and, um, I hope they get some rest when they get back.
Commissioner Dean, thank you very much and I hope they do too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a text, uh, quite early from somebody who works for the City of Missoula thanking me profusely and I was quite confused until I learned why, um, they were thanking me, but it was great to hear, uh, and great to see and we're very grateful for you and the team and everybody who went out there because I know that they were, it was, it was not a good 24 hours over there. Thanks.
Commissioner Reed, thank you.
Same here. I will gratitude to you and your team. Manager Burton, thanks for the intervention and we appreciate that.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Thank you, yeah, I, uh, really appreciate the, the quick response and, and letting us know, um, the need and what was going on and, and, uh, I've been with the city for, 24 some years and we're not always the best at sort of tooting our own horn, so to speak, but this is very much above and beyond the call and, and, uh, we're very proud of the response, so thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Manager Burton? Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Sidney Austin. Is she online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I, I see no one by that name online.
You bet.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ben Kiper, Chair, HCC. Uh, we met on Wednesday and we passed a recommendation regarding dust abatement on the trail south of Davis Street. I believe that was all emailed out to you today, so, um, once that gets on the agenda, we'll talk about that in further detail, so, other than that, that's all I have, so.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Chairman Kiper? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Regular items. Consider a resolution relating to 1,33,000 limited tax general obligation bond, Series 2024A, determining the form and details authorizing the execution and delivery and making appropriations for the payment thereof. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight we have, we have before you the resolution to finalize our, um, limited tax obligation bond. This is a private negotiated limited tax obligation bond, bank qualified. We brought this information to the Commission, um, at the administrative meeting on July 24th. Prior to that, the Commission passed Resolution, uh, 20,920, authorizing the solicitation to banks for, um, an RFP for this, for this bond. We, uh, sent out the solicitation to 13 banks and received six responses. After evaluating the responses with, um, our financial advisor with Baker Tilly, um, we, uh, recommend the proposal from Stockman Bank and for the Commission to approve this 15-year note, um, for 1,33,000, uh, for repaired maintenance out at the city shop for the boiler and the roof. And if you have any other questions, I'm available to answer them.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, this is, um, just a comment, um, and I think because sometimes the general public might be reading the memo and it seems like a lot of very complicated financial and legal language, but, um, I think the line that really summarizes what looks to be a very complicated thing is this in the memo. This building provides office space for transportation services staff and is a vehicle maintenance shop for city vehicles and equipment. The condition of the boiler and roof are in disrepair and in need of immediate, um, in immediate need of replacement. And so I think, I mean, it does look like a, a big issue that we've been talking about lots of times, um, but I'm very glad that our employees will now have a place to repair the vehicles and work, um, that's safe and also warm, um, especially moving into, to the winter, so, um, thanks for all the work going into this. And I hope that maybe summarizes what looks to be more complicated than it actually is.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Yes, I know that the, the staff out there have been, um, uh, asking about the, the boiler repair for some time and the roof has been leaking for quite a long time and so, um, we're happy to be able to move this project forward.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Yes.
Thank you, I'm Steve Foster, I'm the head of marketing for Stockman Bank and I just wanted to express our gratitude for the opportunity to bid and, uh, thank you for accepting our bid and we're always excited to be able to participate in things like this that help our community out, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I don't entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution relating to the 1,33,000 dollar limited tax general obligation bond, Series 2024A, determining the form and details authorizing the execution and delivery and making appropriations for the payment thereof.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to repeal Resolution Number 19549 and, and dissolving the non-motorized travel advisory council, MTAC, to the City of Helena Commission. Clerk of the Commission, Ms. Claiborne, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, as you well know, this is a previously tabled item. We have since had an additional discussion, uh, with you all from a staff, um, I believe, Director Knopki gave you, uh, some additional information that was requested regarding the, um, MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, uh, that was requested by Commissioner Reed and Commissioner Dean at an administrative meeting. We're bringing this item back for, uh, discussion with you all and see if we can get a final decision on this item.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'm sorry, I may be confusing myself, but I recall that at the administrative meeting, we didn't actually have a presentation. We said that we would discuss it today.
My apologies, Commissioner Reed, I may have misspoken.
Okay.
Yeah, additional information could be provided per your request.
Okay, do we have any information to provide?
If there were, uh, questions asked of staff, they are prepared to answer those questions.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, follow-up if I might?
Please.
Thank you. I guess it was a question I had asked previously and so for those who might be joining the discussion for the first time, I, as far as I have been able to discern, the MPO has a function, but that function is not to advise this body on local issues related to, you know, bike lanes and streets and internal projects. Uh, it would be great if we could get a, a clarification. Is the role of the MPO to advise this commission on local street projects, bike lanes, other non-motorized issues, or no? Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Commission, good evening. So, directly, no, but the MPO does have funds for, um, planning documents that can lead the cities involved or entities involved with the MPO, um, toward whatever goals, um, that the documents are for. Part of the, uh, MPO documents for the planning funds, 2.5% have to be set aside for basically complete street, um, planning projects. Some of those projects that, um, other POs in Montana have used MPO funds for was, um, Missoula's Activate 2045, the pedestrian facilities master plan, which looks at the pedestrian facilities as a whole and looks at what improvements need to be done, um, throughout the MPO, not just, um, the regional. There's also the bike or the bicycle facilities master plan, which was also funded by the Missoula MPO. And that was, again, to look at not only the MPO as a whole, but to how to improve that bicycle facilities throughout the city and the county there. So, there's a lot. Since the MPO's PCC, the Policy Coordinating Committee, has, um, an elected official on that, uh, as the mayor is part of that, the mayor of East Helena and the, um, chairman of the, uh, County Commission is on there. They not only can bring, you know, concerns from the city or the county's perspective and then look at providing planning dollars out of that 2.5% or even more of that. That 2.5% is just a minimum that's required by the feds, um, to allocate either per project or overall of the, of that funding. So, um, for instance, with the LRTP, there's going to be an entire section on pedestrian facilities, uh, bicycle facilities and such. So, um, we're gonna not only meet that 2.5%, but most likely exceed that 2.5% because of the, um, extensive nature of those, um, items that have been brought up. So those are things that, you know, as a, as a group will folk, have focus on. So that, um, those chapters or whatever they end up being, could be longer or shorter in other, in other POs, but if it's a, um, you know, uh, something that we want to focus on, then that, obviously those can be expanded.
Please.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I will be opposing this. I think there is definitely going to be an element of non-motorized transportation issues in the MPO or on the MPO, I'm not sure what the correct wording is there, um, but I, I continue to hear language that it, it's a redundancy and I'm just not seeing that. I think local advisory boards are advising us as a commission on local issues and, and to me, the MPO has a different function. I am a little bit concerned that we will be losing that voice. I have appreciated the recommendations from, um, an MTAC on specific projects, um, and I was struck recently at a meeting, uh, regarding the Capitol project, um, by a comment from someone about having angled parking that backs into a bike lane. That's the kind of thing that we need advisory boards to sort of help us see, for lack of a better term, um, and I think, um, and MTAC has done a really great job of, of really bringing a, a local focus to some of these concerns, so I appreciate the, the goal of this and I understand why there is a movement, but I am not seeing redundancy and so I, I will not be supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you. Do, do we have any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, a question for Director Knopki, so you mentioned the Long Range Transportation Plan and that is really kind of what our North Star is in terms of what guides our, uh, transportation facilities and budgeting and the rest, um, locally. We have a new, um, Long Range Transportation Plan, LRTP, coming up. Can you, also I think a really good example of one of those that's going to be funded through the MPO, um, before it would have been part of the TCC, Transportation Coordinating Committee, but now that we've moved, we're larger, we have to, um, accommodate this new structure. That's what it will be funded through. Can you talk about what the timeline for the new Long Range Transportation Plan is? Oftentimes, there's a lot of, um, advisory groups and committees that have to be developed in order to put that together, um, and so I'm wondering if you can talk about that timeline and then, um, how that timeline relates to the advisory groups that help create, um, the LRTP, which is that guiding document.
Sure. Thank you, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, the LRTP, so the MPO money is based on the federal fiscal year, so that money will become available in Oct- on October, or in October, and the plan is to have all the documents ready to go to release the request for qualifications the day that that money becomes available. An LRTP process takes anywhere from 12 to 18 months. In the, in that timeframe, the consultant that's chosen will be collecting data on existing traffic patterns, existing bicycle networks, existing pedestrian patterns, um, to start formulating that existing condition. And during, there's, there's the data collection and then we start moving into, um, stakeholder groups. And I, I want to say the number 23 was sticking in my head last time, the, uh, focus groups that are consultant, but I, I don't want to be quoted on that. But they reach out to all these groups to, um, not only get their specific, um, focus perspective, but also the overall perspective that, you know, what could, you know, this LRTP or what could this policy or what could this, um, changes to the engineering standards do to help facilitate, um, in the case of non-motorized or in bike, in bike lanes or bike networks, um, freight lines, um, you know, there's a number of, of issues that they can, um, take a look at. So, again, LRTP, 12 to 18 months, but also with that LRTP RFQ, we're gonna, we have to, as an MPO, establish a public participation plan and so that consultant will also be, um, tasked with developing that public participation plan right out of the gates so that we're using that to get comments from, um, for the LRTP, but also we'll be doing a comprehensive safety action plan in the beginning stages of that so that we can start using that action plan to start going after some grants that we've been denied in the past because we don't have an updated either LRTP or safety plan. So, those two will be also going in, in kind of parallel with the LRTP, but, you know, they'll all work together to, uh, uh, at the very end, give us a LRTP, but the action plan and the public participation plan will be completed prior to the completion of the LRTP.
Okay, so two follow-up questions, Mr. Mayor, um, if that's okay. The first one is, an example of some of those denied grants would be like Safe Streets for All, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, so we could go out for Sa- Safe Streets for All, that's, could prioritize, for example, Safe Routes to School, um, under this umbrella.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, that's correct.
Okay. And then, um, my second, um, follow-up question, um, so we could be recruiting stakeholder and- And then, my second follow-up question, so we could be recruiting stakeholder input as early as October, so two months for the LRTP, is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioners, I wouldn't say October, because we have to get the RFQ out, we have to score it. So, you know, maybe November, we would start getting that data collection, and then, it really depends on the consultant that gets chosen and their approach to an LRTP or these action plans, to, on how they want to approach it. They may, you know, do something in a different order. All we're going to be is meeting our federal requirements, but also making sure that the public participation plan and the comprehensive safety action plan is completed in a timely manner, so that we can go out for those grants.
Okay. And then, Mr. Mayor, I just have one last question. I think one of the things, and I think maybe this has been kind of, could be maybe an unspoken consideration, I know it's talked about in some of the past memos, but staff capacity in order to, and what I'm hearing is, you know, some Commissioners may not want to eliminate this advisory board, and while we also have these other ones getting stood up, can you talk about the staff capacity in order to, should we decide not to, should we decide to not retire this board and move to the advisory functions under our, the MPO format? What is the staff capacity in order to facilitate both advisory functions?
Mayor and Commissioner. Sorry. Mayor and Commissioner, if the Commission chooses tonight to leave NMTC in place, we would obviously find the staffing capacity to do it. We have in the past, it's just typically, it's an extra two hours of overtime or comp time that, on those monthly meetings, and then there is time for preparation and other activities that may be in conjunction with that. So, we would find the staff time, it's just, it does come either some flex time or some overtime.
So, a budgetary impact, though?
Yes, a minor one, for at least one or two people.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, this question is for the city clerk, if I may. So, one of the areas that we, the Commission and city staff and citizens have been dealing with over the last year and a half or so, has been a pretty comprehensive review of our boards, and their bylaws, and their authorizing resolutions. One of the concerns that I have, I mean, I tend to think the MPO is the arena that we're going to be dealing with, transportation planning issues moving forward, but one of the other areas of concern that I have is, so, if I recall correctly, the resolution was passed in 2008, and if I also recall correctly, there are two plans that are referred to in that authorizing resolution that are no longer part of our system. And so, at a minimum, given that review that we've done of the boards in general, their bylaws, their authorizing resolutions, could you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Logan, Mayor. So, this Commission, as you're well aware, has been, has mandated to the Commission Office, to the clerk, that we do this very large, multi-year project, and where it's ongoing as we speak. And what I have heard from this Commission and even previous Commissioners is they'd like to see modernized process, consistent process, consistent handling of the boards, and an update of how we administrate. In that, there were governing protocols that the Commission asked be applied. One of those was for some of the more, we'll just call them general citizen advisory boards, in which NMTC would fall under that umbrella, that those boards all proceed forward with the same type of creating resolution. And within that creating resolution were several policy decisions that the Commission agreed upon. What it does create, I think, for you all and for the citizens that participate on these boards, is a consistent expectation. And to your point, Commissioner Logan, there are several points within the NMTC creating resolution that either include reports or even groups that, because of the MPO, would no longer be in existence, so those items would need to be removed. There are also several areas that would be in conflict with the current policy decision. So, that includes how the board interacts with the city staff, and how they enter the process for making recommendations. One of the things that I've talked with some of you about, even some of the board members and staff, is that some of the language within an MTAC's creating resolution works sort of against this concept that a board should be coming in at a policy level to work with the Commission to make recommendations. The language within the creating resolution for an MTAC would at least need to fall in line with the other policy decisions that you've made in the board's project, which creates, I guess, this process through which a board can come in at the appropriate time and make recommendations to the Commission. So, I think that would be one area that if NMTC were to continue, we definitely want to sit down in a meeting and explain that a little bit further and in more detail, so that everyone understands that this board in particular has an outdated resolution that's inconsistent with the policy decisions you've made in the past few years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to be clear, I would very much support a new enabling resolution that is in line with all of the board reform. I have, I think that is an excellent idea. I'm simply opposed to the current language, which suggests dissolving with no, there's no language here about reforming with new bylaws. Thanks.
Do we have any other questions? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Question, I've got a couple of questions. Director Kanaki, you had mentioned that the Long Range Transportation Plan is going to take about 12 to 18 months, was that correct? And then, the MPO to set that up, to get the boards going, how long will that take?
Mayor and Commissioner, the PCC and TTAC are already established and are having meetings.
Okay.
So, you know, as was discussed previously, they can do subcommittees, so those can be established through either the PCC or the TTAC, so those could be brought up at the next meeting to have discussions on. So, the MPO is basically up and running. We just need the, we're doing our, basically, our work plan to submit to both MDT and federal agencies that will identify the public participation plan, the action plan, and then the LRTP, and then also.
Just speaking to Mike, please.
Sorry. Also identifies the two and a half percent discussion as part of that plan as well as each one of those work items.
Thank you, Director Kanaki. This one is for the clerk. For the, will any other boards be affected, other than the non-motorized, will any other boards need to be considered or adjusted, or are we looking at any other boards the sunset?
Commissioner Sherrill, Mr. Mayor, I believe at the previous discussion for this resolution, we did give you a couple of examples where we're also looking at how we might create efficiencies or modernize some of the board's systems. You had a discussion at administrative meeting about the opportunity to combine the tax increment financing boards. I guess, it's not exactly, it's maybe an apples and pomegranates comparison, but similar situations where, because of the growth of the city, and because of the complexity of the issues that some of these advisory boards are advising on, there may be an opportunity to use larger organizations to create a situation that you all get the policy recommendations that you need, and there may be opportunities to expand upon those boards at a later date, which I think it was part of the discussion that we had last time regarding the tax increment. There are other opportunities within the board's system that I see as the board's manager, that we could potentially look at, streamlining or creating efficiencies with boards that we struggle to staff, or that we struggle to get interest from the community on, but that's a decision for you all to make. They are, you know, most of these boards serve at your pleasure, so is this a one-off? No. There are other opportunities for that discussion, and there are currently some in the queue.
Thank you.
Any others? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. My name is Greg Worth. I am the current Chair of the Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council, but I will be speaking as an individual tonight. I do want to point out that the Commission adopted growth policy. One of the objectives specifically is to maintain support for the advisory committees. Also note the current, the most recent strategic plan has core values of accessibility, accessible, sustainable, community engagement, and service, so I ask you if, you know, dissolving MTAC meets those core values. You know, we talk a lot about this MPO, and maybe it'll be a good thing, it's more bureaucracy, hopefully that's a good thing. As we have this technical advisory committee, I know there's 12 people on that technical advisory committee. I do appreciate that there's one non-motorized advocate that will get appointed to the technical advisory committee. The rest are made up of government employees. So, I think that, you know, we're looking at potentially two, maybe three, that are actually city residents that'll be serving on the technical advisory committee, that we truly, you know, invested in what the needs are in the city of Helena. So, I do see the need of MTAC advisory to, you know, to provide good advice to the Commission as a whole, not just technical advisory committees or the policy committee through the MPO. We also haven't heard from the MPO manager, you know? The MPO is a separate entity, and we do have an MPO manager, but we haven't heard, you know, what is the MPO manager, how does that person feel about how we structure the MPO? So, I would ask that you deny the resolution to dissolve MTAC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Once again, Ben Kiper, Chair, HCC. I just wanted to reiterate the HCC's stance that we officially oppose the dissolution of MTAC, and we recommend that you vote this item down. The main reason is that we're concerned with the regional focus of the MPO, and we would like the MTAC to remain in place so that we can focus on the local issues. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others?
Mayor Collins and Commissioners, I'm Linda Saul, fairly new to this issue, but I moved here in 1986, so I'm not new at all to Helena, and have served on HCC and also the BikePed Committee way back in the early 80s and 90s. And I'm a lifelong cyclist. I cycle to work, I cycle for my errands, to the grocery store, out to CVS, to Walmart, other places, and we have special needs that only really cyclists know what's working and what isn't about safety and connection between cycle paths and bike paths and pedestrians. And I think, too, a lot of our citizens in the city here use bike as a transportation means, they're not motorized vehicles. And so, we've got kids, and we've got older people, and we've got people without cars. I just think that having a special, unique voice from those who are on the ground, getting places around the city on their bike or on their feet, really can provide a valuable, and have been providing a valuable input to the city about our non-motorized needs. And so, I would really encourage you to vote this down and to keep the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. My name is Chris Holdhugh, and I am new to Helena. I do like to bike for recreation, but also to get places. And so, I think what my impression is, this city is great for recreational bicycling, and if you look up at the plan, the bicycle plan, open parks, it does a good job of showing how you can get around the south hills and et cetera, but in terms of safe routes through this town or to the schools, safe routes to get out to the box stores, safe routes, I don't see them, I can't find them. And I think this is a kind of a need for input, and I'm not hearing that there's going to be citizen input or bike rider input in this new arrangement. So, I would vote, or I would like to see the committee, Advisory Commission not dissolve, but instead modified to fit the new MPO rules. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others in the hall, in the chamber? Madam Clerk, do we have any on line?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on line.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question of Director Kanaki?
Director Kanaki?
Director Kanaki, the MPO manager is a City of Helena employee, is that correct?
Mayor and Commissioners, yes.
Okay.
He's recently taken over as the MPO manager position, so apologies if we would want him here, we can definitely.
Yep. No, that's great. Just really, one brief comment, Mr. Mayor, before we move to motion. I just think, want to take one moment, because I think throughout this conversation, the last number of weeks, there's been a misconception that approving this dissolution means that there is no outlet for citizen input, which is not the case. I will say this is a transition time, so will you have an opportunity, will there be an opportunity for a group to come together next week? No, because we have to get the RFQ out for this, the LRTP. I think Helena is a place that is going through a lot of growing pains right now in a lot of different ways. We're also going through a lot of transition periods, so that includes, for example, in community development, we're moving from the, what would have been a more outdated model of the growth policy to now having to adopt a land use planning document. Us moving to the MPO was something that we had to do, because we met a certain federal threshold, and that our funding is now coming through a different avenue. I think that we are in a place where, well, as we heard in the public comments, there have always been new iterations of multimodal stakeholder groups in Helena. We heard in the 80s and 90s a BikePed Committee. We then moved to this Non-Motorized Transportation Committee. Now, we'll be moving to the stakeholder group that would help advise on the development of the Long Range Transportation Plan, which is, as we mentioned, really the North Star of how we plan our budgetary dollars, not just regionally, but locally, too. I think a really good example is the money that we've put into continuing the completion of Centennial Trail. Those are things that cost a lot of money, and we need those federal dollars in order to cross the finish line. So, I really hope that we are taking a sec to think about the fact that we want our public participation plans and stakeholder feedback to be gathered through the structures that are built for a Helena of 2025, and not a Helena of 2005. Does that mean it is not fun and the growing pains are not fun? Yes. But I also think that means we get to a product where we can actually have the staff time and resources in developing really great plans that are informed by citizen feedback and inclusion and stakeholder groups, which is what will be allowed through the Long Range Transportation Plan stakeholder process, so that we can be going for those large federal grants successfully. We have already tried to apply for a Safe Streets For All grant, and we were denied that grant because we didn't have the structures in place with the right planning documents in place, regardless if we had, regardless if we had an existing non-motorized transportation committee. And the reason we want those grants is because we want to be able to complete safe routes to schools. to schools. Billings got close to $4 million for safe routes to schools. We want that to be Helena and I want to make sure that we have the structures in place for that to be successful. So I understand that, you know, current Non-Motorized Transportation Committee members, I understand that this is probably a hard thing. I'm going to be supporting this because I really want to make sure that we are developing documents with the stakeholder input that is built for the future and that we can successfully start going after those grants because right now our staff time is, is not set up in a way that we, we can successfully do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just one final comment. I think, I've said it before and I will say it again, I feel like we are, we are forcing ourselves to choose when we don't need to. I am 100% supportive of the MPO and everything that's going to come from the MPO and the long-range planning. I think this is where Helena needs to go, but I don't think that means we can't have an MTAC. And I look forward to the LRTP very much, but that is a plan. That will be, it's a planning document. What I'm concerned about is the today issue. I have a 12-year-old son who would ride his bike to school, except I'm terrified to let him. I ride my bike for, for recreation and for sports and it's, it's a scary thing to do in Helena. So I, I think, I don't know why we are making ourselves choose between the two. I don't think we need to. I think there's no reason not to support an invested, engaged, active group of people who are committed to our non-motorized connectivity in this, in our city while we also support the MPO. I think it can only serve us and make us stronger to have both. And so while, again, I very much support updating the, creating documents for an MTAC, I really don't think we have to end one in order to have the other. I think we can have both. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Any others? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would move approval of a resolution dissolving the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Council and repealing Resolution Number 19549 and any duties discharged to the council membership, staff and commissions shall be nullified.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff?
No.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
No.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two.
Consider, public hearings. Consider a resolution to increase the fee charged for use of the firing range at the Helena Regional Airport. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight we have the final passage of a resolution to reset the fees at the firing range from $10 per user to $100 for a half day and $200 for a full day. The range can accommodate to 27 users per day. This particular fee is used to set aside funds for the repair and maintenance of the firing range. And if you have any other further questions at this time, myself or Assistant Chief Bailey is here.
Is that for a user? The $100?
It, no. It's, it's $100 for up to 27 people for a half a day and $200 for the full day.
Gotcha.
Up to 27 users.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, a question. So are the users typically from public agencies?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Logan, they're, they're typically public agencies that use a firing range.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution to increase the fee charged for use of the firing range at the Helena Regional Airport.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider an ordinance amending City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and the official zoning map of the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from public lands and institutions, PLI to R3 residential for the property legally described as all of the Lot 9 and north half of Lot 10, 11 and 12 in Block 434 of the Allen addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Plana Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight we have the 515 North Ewing zone change from public lands and institutions to R3. This is the second presentation of this in the public hearing. As stated, this is a consideration of an ordinance amending the City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 in the official zoning map of the City of Helena to change the zoning district from PLI to R3 residential. This property is generally located on the southeast side of the intersection of 10th Avenue in North Ewing Street. You can see it here on the map highlighted in red. The applicant is seeking a zone change to R3. This will align the property with the surrounding residential neighborhood. This R3 zoning will allow for limited commercial activity on the site. PLI zoning provides for and applies only to public and quasi-public institutional uses in lands. The R3 zoning districts provide for the development of a mixture of residential structures and limited compatible non-residential uses. Our current growth policy designates this portion of town as mixed use for places where people can live, work, play and learn. Montana Code 76-2-304 gives the criteria and guidelines for zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be made in accordance with the growth policy and designed to secure from fire and other dangers, promote public health, public safety and the general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other public requirements. In adopting these regulations, the governing body shall consider the reasonable provision of light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation, compatible urban growth, the character of the district in conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land. As stated, the 2019 City of Helena growth policy designates this area as mixed use. The current PLI zoning typically restricts the uses found within mixed use. There's very low, very limited residential uses. Only community residential facilities are allowed within the PLI and also most retail and service, commercial uses are restricted from PLI. This property is served by all of the City of Helena Emergency Services and the range of traffic expected for PLI, for a five-acre parcel for a low-intensity use such as a worship facility, as is found in the areas, about 131 trips per five acres. A higher intensity use such as the Capitol complex generates an expected 3,571. These residential uses will be lower with an R3 district generating expected 89 to 218 trips per day. Department comments, Transportation stated that they did not believe this would substantially change the existing traffic patterns in the area. Historic Preservation stated no comment as there's no alterations to the building. Fire stated that any future alterations would have to be reviewed by the current code. Building addressing public works in parks provided responses of no comment. The HCC and the Police Department did not provide responses. This zone change aligns with the growth policy objectives of promoting and sustaining Helena's economic vitality, sustaining the historic heart of Helena, planning for and establishing quantities of land uses supporting community needs in neighborhood centers, working to preserve and mitigate the potential loss of historic cultural and aesthetically significant features, and to apply and revise zoning districts with careful consideration of factors including the future land use map compatibility with surrounding land uses, infrastructure, development of vacant and underutilized buildings, existing and future traffic patterns, and the other stated goals and objectives of the growth policy. As stated, this would bring the zoning into alignment with the surrounding residential neighborhoods and it would not give this property any special rights and privileges that the residential properties adjacent do not get. The zoning commission meeting was legally noticed in the IR on April 27th. Neighbor notices were sent out at that time and a notice sign was placed on the site. This meeting was legally noticed on the 13th and similarly, neighbor notices sent to everyone within 150 feet. As of today, one written comment in opposition has been received. That was forwarded to the Commission on Friday. Public comment at the zoning commission meeting was in support of the proposal. At the May 14th meeting, the zoning commission recommended approval of the motion or the resolution five to zero. At the June 17th meeting, this body approved the first passage four to zero. It's city staff's recommendation that you approve an ordinance amending the City of Helena Ordinance Number 3097 and the official zoning map for the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from public lands and institutions to R3 for the property legally described as all of Lot 9 in the north half of Lots 10, 11 and 12 in Block 434 of the Allen addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. And at this time, are there any questions for city staff from the commission?
Thank you, Plana Holland. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, just one brief question. So the public comment that we received that was opposed, it was due to parking. Is that, I mean, is that how you would characterize it?
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, that was kind of the, one of the primary concerns of it. They did address other issues, but yes, parking is a, was a primary concern.
Okay. And then one of the things I just wanted to just confirm I'm reading this correctly from the findings was that a zone change from PLI to R3 is expected to actually reduce the number of trips?
According to our data in the Institution of Traffic Engineers, yes.
Okay.
That is the expected outcome.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have any other comments from the Commissioners? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Please.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I'm Roger Ragatzka. I live at 310 9th Avenue, right behind the, the building in question. And right now we have an immense traffic there with tourists and stuff coming to the cathedral, which is a lot of stress on our roads and parking and just the increased traffic. With them changing this and turning it into more businesses, I guess, I think it's going to do a lot of undue stress on the neighborhood, you know? So I'm just opposed to any changes, especially if it's going to involve my residents. So that's my two cents, so thank you.
Thank you. Plana Holland, would you please step up?
Am I missing something? The gentleman is saying it's going to increase and I thought I heard say it's going to decrease.
I'm taking our information from the Institute of Traffic Engineers data on this. This is what we use for all conditional use permits and zone changes. As stated, they give a range for an area, per a five-acre area, and it's for residential uses, which is what this would then become, the same use as the neighborhood. We expect. The, the property here has 11 parking spaces on-site and I've calculated that they have 11 additional parking spaces along the street frontage. And the applicant has stated that for special events and things like that, they have an agreement to use the parking lot with the church across the street, across 10th there, to handle any overflow parking for events. And as stated, the day-to-day is not expected to significantly alter the already approved uses of the area.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments for Plana Holland? Any other public comments on this topic?
Good evening, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Stanfelle. I am the co-founder of the Montana Jewish Project, which is the 501(c)(3) that reacquired historic Temple Emmanuel and returned it to Jewish community use for the first time since 1935, when the congregation sold Montana's first synagogue and the first synagogue in the entire interior northwest for $1 to the state of Montana. We are an all-volunteer-led organization and in our sprint to raise the funds to buy back this building, the real estate attorney who was volunteering and helping us missed the PLI designation on the building. Our plan was and always has been to use the building exactly as it has been used since 1935, and that is as offices. One of the Commissioners tonight in talking about the firefighters going to Montana said this is the story of Montanans helping Montanans. And I can only say the same about the entire history of historic Temple Emmanuel. When the congregation had to give the building up in 1935, its pews were donated to the first African Baptist Church. When we were raising funds, it was the entire community of Helena and all of Montana that supported us and we are proud, again, another item mentioned tonight, to be holding our third annual Pride Shabbat event. In 1981, the, the state was basically using the building as storage and sold it to the highest bidder, which was the Diocese of Helena. Our understanding is the Diocese employed 30 people in that building. Our plans are to rent out the existing basement and the first floor to professional tenants, which would be therapists, accountants, people doing technology, lawyers, not any kind of commercial businesses. And upstairs is our Jewish Community Center where there is a staff of one, if you want to call me the staff. I'm not paid. It's an all-volunteer organization. We do have community events from time to time and as the city planner mentioned, we do have a standing agreement where we can advertise with the First Presbyterian Church to use their parking lot. Behind our building is parking for 15. We anticipate having far fewer than 15 tenants in the neighborhood.
Ma'am, you can wrap up. You don't just have to, you can wrap up.
Felt like maybe it was an Oscar speech. Our business model relies on having the income from these tenants. And in keeping with the story of Montanans helping Montanans, we currently have a library that's open to the entire community for use. Tours, curriculum boxes that we send out for free, non-religious, to any fourth-grade teacher in the state who rec, who requests them. We have an oral history initiative to capture the, the forgotten stories of Montana's Jewish life as they are interwoven. All of our, our time and our labor is donated and we're just so grateful for all of Helena for supporting this. And we're disappointed that not to have all the neighbors on board. Unfortunately, I don't think we can be responsible for parking coming to the cathedral. And we'd like to work with him to make sure that his needs are addressed. We want to be good neighbors and that's part of why we want to use the building as it is rather than as we could under PLI, I think, which would be as a giant daycare center and I think would really change the character of the neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other public comments on this?
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Brown and I am the...
My name is Kathy Brown, and I am the property manager hired by the Montana Jewish Project to manage the building. And I just want to point out, we're talking about 10 offices, five on one floor, five on another floor. This is not like it's a big commercial endeavor where we're going to have people coming and going and, and some busy commercial activity. It's, we want to maintain the character of the neighborhood too, and that's part of what we're doing, is trying to find the right person to rent an office so that they will respect the integrity of the building, of the neighborhood, of downtown Helena. So, we are very sensitive to the needs of the neighbors. I personally, along with Rebecca and sometimes on my own, went around and talked to all the neighbors. I did encounter the one concern, and at that time, the concern was more about, my understanding anyway, was taxes going up and things like that. But I, I hope that you can understand that we want to really respect the neighborhood and respect the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Commissioners, I'll link to a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the City of Helena ordinance number 3097 in the official zoning map of the City of Helena that changes the zoning district from public lands and institutions, PLI, to an R3 residential for the property legally described as the, as an all, as all of Lot 9 in the north half of lots 10, 11, and 12 in block 434 of the Allen addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow for general services, professional offices in the R3 district, zoning district, for the property located at 515 North Ewing Street, legally described as all of Lot 9. Oh, they look like they're seeing that's one. All of Lot 9 and the north half of the lots 10, 11, and 12 in block 434 of the Allen addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County. You're back. You're welcome.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. Part two of this process tonight is the conditional use permit for general services and professional offices use in an R3 zoning district for 515 North Ewing Street. This is consideration of a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow the general services and professional offices uses in an R3 zoning district for this property located at 515 North Ewing. Again, this property is generally located on the southeast side of 10th Avenue and North Ewing Street. The current land uses are professional offices and community center. As, when this was, application was entered, the property was zoned PLI. You, this board just approved the requested zone change to change that to R3 residential. This building was built in 1891 as a synagogue. Since 1935, it has been used as professional offices, first by the State of Montana Department of Health and Human Services, and since 1981 by the Catholic Diocese of Helena. When the building was purchased in 2022 by the Montana Jewish Project, the Community Development Department allowed the continued use of professional offices as a pre-existing legal non-conforming use. This conditional use permit will allow for general services uses that allow, that align with both the property owner's objectives and the character of the neighborhood, and it will bring that previous, pre-existing non-conforming use of professional offices into a conforming use. General services is defined as professional and personal care services where customers come to the property. These include photography, fitness, weight loss, hairstyling. Specifically, in this case, they are looking, as stated, for therapists and other sort of professional uses along those lines where the clients are on-site. The professional offices use is facilities where customers may come to the property, but they are not required for the activity to happen. This is uses such as engineering firms, architects, some accounting. As stated, the R3 residential district provides for the development of a mixture of residential structures in compatible non-residential uses, and that this area is designated as mixed use in the 2019 growth policy for places where people can work, live, play, and learn. The existing site and structure is to remain as is. Parking is accessed off of 10th Street. Pedestrian access through sidewalks on both frontages. There's no proposed changes to landscaping, signs, or lighting, and no change to city solid waste services or utilities. The interior is configured for these uses presently, and no changes are proposed for the structure. Here's the subject property looking southeast on top, and from the back of the building looking west below. Adjacent to the west across Ewing Street is the Helena Cathedral. To the north is the First Presbyterian Church, and immediately adjacent on the south edge is additional Catholic Diocese property. Beyond these uses is R3 residential to the south and to the east. Again, here is the plot showing the area in question. Conditional use permit review criteria. A conditional use permit may be granted by the city commission only upon findings and supported by substantial credible evidence the following standards are met. The proposed conditional use as conditioned will not adversely impact public health, safety, or general welfare. And the proposed conditional use as conditioned will not adversely impact the peaceful use of the existing property or improvements in the vicinity. In considering whether these standards are met, the following factors must be considered. Location, character, and natural features of the subject property. Type and size of the proposed structure and improvements. Historical uses, established use patterns, and recent changes and trends in the neighborhood. Conformity of the proposed use with the neighborhood plan. Current and proposed pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle traffic. Whether this use is consistent with the Helena Climate Change Action Plan. Whether the proposal meets the zoning dimensional standards requirements for the zoning district without need for variance. Hours of operation, noise, glare, odor, and express public opinion. Any one of these factors may be sufficient to justify denial of the permit or placement of conditions. The proposed additional use will not require any modification to the site and structure. As stated, the growth policy designates this as mixed use. The estimated trips per day are similar to current uses into the weekday traffic estimates of the surrounding worship facilities. I had calculated there is off-street and on-street parking totaling 22 spaces. No increase in noise level is expected. Business activities will be within the building and operate during normal business hours. Community events may happen approximately six times per year, and the applicant states those will be concluded by 8:00 PM. No new exterior lighting is proposed, and no suspected odor issues, as this will be in line with typical office uses, and there will not be a new commercial kitchen or anything like that. Similar to the previous item, transportation stated that this does not appear to substantially change the existing traffic. Historic gave no comment, as the facade will not be altered. Fire, building, addressing public works and parks provided responses of no comment, and the HCC and Police Department did not provide comment. The zoning commission meeting was legally noticed on April 27th, along with the public notice boards put up and letters sent to property owners within 150 feet. Again, this meeting was legally noticed on July 13th with new neighbor notices sent out. Similarly, one comment in opposition has been received, and public comment at the zoning commission meeting was in support of the proposal. At the May 14th zoning commission meeting, the, they voted for approval of the conditional use permit five to zero. It is city staff's opin, opinion, or, yeah, city staff's opinion that this body should recommend or should approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow general services and professional offices uses in an R3 zoning district for the property legally described as all of Lot 9 in the north half of lots 10, 11, and 12 in block 434 of the Allen addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. And at this time, city staff can take any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Planner Holland. Comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll link to a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow general services, professional offices uses in an R3 zoning district for the property legally described as all of Lot 9 and the north half of lots 10, 11, and 12 in block 434 of the Allen addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider quitclaiming city interest in property near Armory. City Attorney Doctor, you have the floor.
Mayor Commissioners, thank you. I will remain here seated with your permission, Mayor.
Please.
Okay, thank you. This is the public hearing to consider the city's recommendation to quitclaim property near the Armory property that is now owned by St. Peter's Health. It is the property, and there's a depiction in your materials, it's the property that is located between the Armory building and the YMCA just set off from Last Chance Gulch. It doesn't have any, anything on it. It is legal, legally described as lots 1 through 6 of block 55 of the Central Edition number three. The question about the ownership of this property came to our attention from D&amp;M Property through Marcus Bonda. At that time, they intended to donate this property to the Armory, or to the St. Peter's Health for their healthcare facility expansion, and discovered, much to their chagrin, they did not own the property for which they had been paying taxes on since 2016. And the, in response, my office then did a title search, record search in the city, resolution search, discovered that the city has owned that property since 1938, and there is a question whether or not there was an intention to continue owning that after 1953. But the state of Montana has not recognized the city as the owner of that property since 1992. It then deeded the property to D&amp;M Development, including this portion of the property in 2016, and then the, they've been paying taxes on it ever since. As a result, we have queried the city departments, the city manager's office. There is no current or foreseeable need or use for this property. And as a result, the city recommends, in order to clean up the title issues with this property, that we quitclaim any interest that we actually have in this property to D&amp;M Development, and allow them to then donate it to St. Peter's Health for their healthcare facility expansion that is planned for that Armory building and the property surrounding. I have no, nothing further, but I can answer any questions, should you have any? Thank you.
How big is this property?
Where?
How big is it? How large is it?
It's quite small. I don't know the actual dimensions of it. But if you can picture the space between the Armory building and the YMCA, it's kind of depression in the, in the area. I'm not sure what they're going to use it for, but it doesn't look all that usable.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll link to a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution that authorizes the city to quitclaim the city's interest in lots 1 through 6 and block 55 of the Central Edition number three to D&amp;M Development LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online? Yes, sir.
Mayor and Commissioners and staff, my name is Rob Freystadt. I live at 507 First Street. That's the corner of Davis and First. I'd like to thank the city for spraying magnesium chloride on the lower quarter-mile of Davis Gulch Road. It's been a very dusty summer in that neighborhood since it had not been sprayed last summer or until recently. And the breezes blow the dust to the north, affecting those of us who live on and pay for paved roads. The city has been kind enough to spray Davis Gulch since about 1997, after I complained for some time about the dust created by Davis Gulch. Since that time, development and especially recreational use of Davis Gulch have created considerably more traffic in the area. The city has made a sizable investment in the trails and the trailhead at the old shooting range. Being handicapped accessible, that area would make a pleasant area in which to have family picnics if picnic tables were provided. It's certainly a very nice area in which to hike and ride bicycles. However, I fear that people avoid using it as much as it could be due to the dust still created by traffic in the upper reaches of Davis Gulch just north of the intersection of Tucker and Dry Gulches. Furthermore, the dust created in this section of the road is blown to the north during the evening hours when people are trying to recreate in the area and enjoy their yards just north of the unpaved portion. I'd like to suggest that the city luck into ways that we might fund paving, the heavily-used gravel roads that extend into the gulches south of town, namely Davis and Grizzly Gulches. The dust from these roads eventually makes its way into the valley.
So you can wrap up?
Dang, that was impressive. The dust from those roads eventually make, makes its way into the valley, contributing to the air pollution that we all, that we all breathe. As you know, the county recently paved the Remini Road, and what an improvement that has made. I'd like to thank you for considering that. But I also wanted to point out, since last fall, I've been sending letters to the Transportation Department and also to the city commission regarding the spraying of Davis Gulch. I did receive responses from the Transportation Department last fall, but I never received any reply whatsoever from the commission or staff this spring as I continued my requests about spraying Davis Gulch. But again, I think if we can find ways to fund the paving of these heavily-used high-speed roads, it would do an immense improvement to the recreation and also the breathability of our air in the valley. So, thank you very much for the consideration. Thank you very much for spraying the road. We all appreciate that in this neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Director Kenaki, one quick question. Is that city limits?
Mayor Commissioners, the first portion of Davis up to basically Tucker Gulch is city limits. After that is county. It actually starts a little bit before the Tucker Gulch intersection.
And the area he's talking about? And the area he's talking about, is it within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other public comments on the, uh, any topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised, Kenneth Eaton.
Would you please recognize them?
Mayor, uh, am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Can or cannot? Ah, geez.
We can hear you. You, 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 you can be heard.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. Well, uh, very short, I'll make it in a minute. Um, the July 10th, uh, Commission Business Meeting, Commissioner Reed made the suggestion that the, uh, right-of-way or segments of La Grande Cannon Trail, and I've written an email to you with details of this, that that, uh, could be phased in. And, uh, Manager, uh, Burton commented that he'd report back. So, I'm just, uh, checking in to see if there, any report has been made or if it's been commenced, or when we can expect to have that report. I think it's very important.
Are you done, sir?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor? Maybe just really briefly for Manager Burton, for those that maybe weren't on that administrative meeting. It's, we have to wait until the property is fully annexed from the county. And that's where we are, is that accurate?
Yeah, um, Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, I think part of it is that there's, there's a request to permanently turn that right-of-way into a walking trail. But there's no provision under the law for us to do that. The road is closed, and it is open as a walking trail. Uh, it has been for some 25 years. But, uh, I did, uh, after the email was sent to you, Dr. Eaton copied me on the email. I fully intend to, uh, reach out to Ken Eaton and have him come in and meet with city staff to see what it is that they're actually asking for. And in talking with, uh, some leaders at the Prickly Pearland Trust, it's my understanding that they at least want a policy statement that doesn't, you know, require statutory authority under the law. Uh, and, you know, in terms of future annexations, we can't, uh, the commission can't act on that until a preliminary plat is filed and the annexation request is, uh, is made by the landowner. And we don't, as a city, drive that timeframe. So, I do intend on reaching out to, uh, Dr. Eaton and see if he has time for a, a discussion.
You bet. Thank you. Commissioners, any further comments? This meeting is adjourned.